All right. I will now call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order. It is April 23rd, 2024. Could I have the roll call?
Ms. Knudsen?
Here.
Paul LaZane?
Here.
Winn? Peterson?
Here.
Goodrich?
Here.
All council members except Councilmember Winn are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, the city attorney, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich?
Seconded.
Seconded by Knudsen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Next item, I have two proclamations that I am going to read this evening. And the first is for Mental Health Awareness Day. Whereas the National Alliance on Mental Illness, otherwise known as NAMI, is the nation's largest grassroots mental health organization dedicated to building better lives for the millions of Americans affected by mental illness. And whereas the face of mental illness isn't some stranger, it's our coworkers, our neighbors, our friends, our families, and sometimes ourselves. And whereas mental illness does not discriminate, it affects adults, children, and people of every ethnic, socioeconomic, religious, or political background. And whereas one in five adults in the United States experiences a diagnosable mental disorder, and one in five youth aged 13 to 18 experiences a severe mental disorder in a given year. And whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death for America's youth ages 15 to 24, and the vast majority of those who die by suicide have a mental illness that is often undiagnosed or untreated. And whereas half of all chronic mental illness begins by age 14 and three-quarters begin by the age of 24, therefore treating cases early could address and reduce disability before mental illness becomes more severe. And whereas NAMI Johnson County will hold its annual walk at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 4th at the Terry True Blood Recreation Area in Iowa City. The walk aims to inspire and initiate a community conversation about the impact that mental illness has on every single part of our collective lives, from family systems to primary healthcare, to the education system, to the business community, and beyond. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of Coralville, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2024, as NAMI Mental Health Awareness Day in Coralville, Iowa, and encourage all residents to increase the awareness and understanding of mental health and be informed of the treatment options available in our county for individuals with mental illness. Signed on this 23rd day of April, 2024, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. There we go. And do we have anyone here this evening to receive the proclamation? Yes, would you like to say a few words?
So, good evening. I'm Mary Isa. I'm the Executive Director of NAMI Johnson County, and thank you so much for reading the proclamation this evening. And I invite all of you to attend our walk on May 4th, as you said, out at Terry True Blood Recreation Area. But it's a day where we take time to celebrate the individuals who are living with mental illness and just recognize that we're a community supporting everyone. So come out. Last year, we had 600 people attend. Welcome us to try to break that goal again. And we have music and entertainment and children's activities, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Would you like to get a photo?
Absolutely.
Okay. My next proclamation this evening is for Older Americans Month. Whereas Johnson County Livable Community for Successful Aging, J.C.L.C., seeks out to collaboratively celebrate the lives of older adults in the communities throughout this county. And whereas May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor the older adults in Coralville and their influence on every facet of American society. And whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas the city of Coralville must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting our commitment to inclusivity and connectedness. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Coralville, do hereby proclaim May to 2024 to be Older Americans Month in the city of Coralville, and urge all citizens to celebrate the profound positive impact of the meaningful interactions and social connections with seniors for the entire community. Signed this 23rd day of April, 2024, Megan Foster, Mayor. All right. And do we have some folks to receive this proclamation? Hello? Step up to the mic, and we'd love to hear a few words from you.
I'm Bob Untied, the Chair of Livable Communities here with John Klon, also of that group. But I'm also going to speak very briefly about being the Executive Director of Trail of Johnson County. We've appreciated the support we've gotten in small grants the last two years, which resulted with the support of Councilmember Winn and the fire chief in our getting a couple dozen smoke detectors and weather radios to low-income seniors in Coralville. And then this year, we're going to attempt a project that will try to find new members and volunteers who will support them in identified neighborhoods that we've worked with the University of Iowa Department of Geography to see that has more low-income seniors without cars and other things like that. So we're targeting neighborhoods where we're trying to create volunteers and members who will, you know, benefit from one another and will report back, you know, through the normal processes on how successful that is. I have to note, here's my name dropping thing, Diana Lundell is going to help us with that, So we appreciate all of that thing, but I'm here again primarily as the Chair of Livable Communities. And we work to expand currently intelligent new housing options in municipalities in the county. We're going to do a Healthy Aging Fair this fall. We're working with the University of Iowa on a survey of seniors in the county in the next year and more. And Livable Communities is grateful for this proclamation, for the way it demonstrates the city's valuing of its older population, and for the ways, all the ways you invest in seniors. So thanks.
All right. Thank you. Do you like a photo?
Sure.
Okay.
Bob, would you tell us what Trail stands for?
Yeah. Tools and resources for active, independent membership of seniors and screen for, you know, some.
Yeah. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Community Comment. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So I think we have some folks that would like to address us this evening? Yeah. You want to step up to the microphone? Can sign in. Tell us your name, and can write down your address.
For tall people only. My name's Mary McCann. I live in Tiffin, and I will put the address down on this sheet here. I wanted to tell you about experience, and I did email everyone, but Mike and I communicated today about the challenge of knowing everything that's going on and uniquely not knowing certain things. I'm here to tell you about something that happened for Tiffin that makes the June 4th primary very, very important for the county supervisors. In December, I was present to watch the challenge that Tiffin's mayor and city council and Sheriff Kunkel faced when they presented their Tiffin's five-year law enforcement contract to the county supervisors. I was there for a totally different reason. For your reference, I did give you copies there of the Joint Emergency Communications Center dispatch calls for 911 calls and police actions for Johnson County and also for Coralville. The first three pages of Coralville, January, February, and March, and the next are for the entire county for January, February, and March. If anyone has any doubt at all that we have, we do not have a society where we can abolish policing. We do have a society where we need that support. As you read through the call types and dispositions, it's safe to say that few among us would be willing or able to manage those emergencies without city law enforcement or the sheriff's department. As you can see, in Coralville, in January, there were 2,246 calls, in February, 2,158, and in March, 2,253. And you can see that the numbers are also much higher and average in the neighborhood of 11,500 for the entire county. When the Board of Supervisors voted to approve law enforcement five-year contract, it was three ayes and two nays. And had I not been present, I would have only heard the publicity that in fact the law enforcement contract was approved. I would not have realized with my ravenous political mind that the three ayes were up for reelection. And I knew instantly that the people who were involved with the nays are very dedicated to abolish policing and also to Iowa Freedom Riders. I knew instantly that they would be presenting someone else, and they have, Mandy Remington, who will be an additional nay vote on the county of supervisors. I think that it's fine to have some representatives for people who object to anything having to do with policing. That's fine. But when we get a majority in a county level, the reaction in Tiffin was anger. There was a feeling that the votes that we entrust to our city council and to our mayor were being disregarded, that there was this element of government, just like our state government, that will send down genuinely appalling rulings to us, that they were now coming into our county and changing what it was that the people expected. We have a city council and a mayor who absolutely know our streets, know many of us. So that is where our trust lies. And really, the only example, everything that you represent is about democracy. We don't feel that in Iowa anymore, so this really matters. The two nay votes will be there for two more years. Mandy Remington represents an additional nay vote. Consequently, we know that law enforcement budgets in all shapes and forms will be subjected to what I would consider to be prejudicial treatment. I would like to see that not happen. I'm certain you know the challenges unincorporated towns face under those conditions. It's fairly predictable. Everybody wants to have law enforcement, to have more social workers. Everybody wants that. Law enforcement wants that. Coralville, with two other departments, applied for one grant to have one, one social worker who worked tirelessly when they were shared between the departments. That's the state of our situation here, realistically. We have HHS and DHS merging, losing funding, and losing all of their police liaisons. So we have a difficult challenge to face. And when law enforcement takes a look at their needs, if they have a county supervisor set like that, they're really going to be struggling to do the right things. This is not something that they should have to struggle with. That is a state-created problem. And again, I can only tell you that the people that vote for you and the people that support you, the reason, Mayor, you are able to run without opposition, is there's no doubt that there's trust here. That really does need to be maintained. And so I'm asking you to please vote for the incumbents. When you come to the primary, please support them because they are the only protection we have from that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay. And I think we have some other speakers with us this evening? Yes. Step up to the mic and state your name. Tell us what you have to share with us this evening.
Don't leave me hanging. Good evening. I'm Jennifer, and standing beside me is Omega. Together, we serve as the community members for the Coralville Asian Festival. We extend our sincere gratitude to the city of Coralville for their generous support of $1,000 during our inaugural festival last year. This support was instrumental in bringing together over 1,000 individuals coming together in celebration. Our mission is to cultivate an inclusive and welcoming environment where everyone can immerse themselves in the rich tapestry of Asian cultural heritage within our local community. And tonight, we would like to ask the mayor, council members, city administrators, and dedicated staff for their support as we organize our second annual event held on May 18th, 2024, at S.T. Morrison Park. And it's also important to note, May is recognized as Asian American and Pacific Islander National Heritage Month, month, excuse me, commemorating the historical contributions, cultural traditions, diverse languages, and food from across the Asian continent within the United States. In closing, our vision is to establish an annual tradition within the Coralville community where people from diverse backgrounds can come together to support, empower, and uplift one another. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes. You can bring those up, and we'll get those passed out to folks. And I just have to say real quick, if you don't follow Coralville Asian Fest on social media, you should. They have a really, they do such a great job, and they have a lot of really informative content on their, on their, on their social platforms. Looking forward to the festival. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item. I'm assuming, is there anybody else? I don't think so. Okay. Next item. We have our fiscal year 2025 budget. We have the public hearing. And before we get to the public hearing, we will have a presentation from our Finance Director, Anne Hester.
So this is fiscal year 2025 budget, budget highlights. The property tax levy rate set for this budget at $14.55 per $1,000 of taxable valuation, this is an increase from $14.31 in fiscal year 24. This budget reflects necessary expenses needed to provide services in our community. And two specific areas of increase, premiums for property and casualty insurance, and workers' compensation insurance. Also to keep in mind, the state residential property rollback, the taxable percentage of assessed value decreased from 54.65% to 46.34%. The goals for this budget, pass balanced budget and maintain sufficient fund balances, maintain the property tax levy rate when possible, fund necessary infrastructure, and provide high-quality city services, and enhance the quality of life in Coralville. The challenges continue to be generally rising costs and planning for future needs. Property in Iowa is grouped into five classes. It used to be six classes up to last year. Residential, now it also includes multi-residential property, commercial, industrial, agricultural, and utilities. Growth limitation imposed on each class by the state to eliminate dramatic increases between classes. Reduction due to growth limitation is called rollback. This slide gives highlights the changes in rollback from fiscal year 24 to fiscal year 25. You can see the changes. It was a pretty dramatic decrease as far as percentage. Residential decreased over 15%, and agricultural decreased over 21%. Also to keep in mind, a new for this year, commercial property, the first $150,000 of value will be subject to residential rollback. This gives outline of the history of rollback, and you can see to the left that residential used to be around 80% back in '92, and now is all the way back to just a little over This provides an example of rollback and tax rate changes for residential property. If we have a property valued at $100,000, the taxable value for fiscal year 25 will decrease by $8,307 from fiscal year 24. Also to keep in mind that levy rate will increase by 24 cents, and the result effect will be that the city, the tax that city will receive will decrease by $107.87. The next slide provides example of rollback and tax rate changes for commercial property using example of property valued at $500,000. Taxable value will decrease by $65,486 from what it used to be in fiscal year 24. Also, the levy rate will increase by 24 cents, and the property tax that the city will receive will decrease by $845.79. The next slide provides outline of tax reform legislation going back to 2013, and the state replacement payments to local governments. They're scheduled to fully expire by fiscal year 29. In fiscal year 24, so far, we received $555,958, and we expect the same, second payment, the same amount by June 30th. City tax levy components, there are several components to the city tax levy rate, general, liability and property insurance, transit, employee benefits, and debt service. This is just provides a breakdown of tax levy rate. Operating levies increasing by 24 cents for fiscal year 25, and debt service levy will remain the same as fiscal year 24. The next slide talks about increase in insurance premiums. This is one of the major reasons why the levy is going up for fiscal year 25. This is a snapshot of property and casualty insurance. As you can see, in fiscal year 25, the insurance premiums will go up by $453,236, which is over 39%. Also to keep in mind that tax levy set by city of Coralville is just a component of overall tax rate. We have other entities that are taxing, and keep that in mind, that overall tax levy rate will be over $38. This is just provide another representation of the city of Coralville tax rate. It accounts for about 38% of overall tax levy rate. Iowa Johnson, Iowa City Community School District accounts for 42%, Johnson County for 16%, and we have other taxing entities here to the left. General fund, which is the main operating fund for the city of Coralville, revenues, you know, they come from several sources. One of the main sources are property tax, hotel motel tax, also have licenses and permits. We have interest and rental income, grants and contracts between governments, charges for services, for example, recreational programs, and other financing sources. Estimated revenue for fiscal year 25 is projected to be at $33,182,189, which is a 7.5% increase from fiscal year 24. These revenues will support all general fund functions, including public safety, health and social services, culture and recreation, community economic development, general government, and contingencies. The next slide provides an overview of revenue sources, various revenue sources, and as you can see from here, property taxes account for 42% of overall revenue, overall revenue for general fund, and the next largest is hotel motel tax at 11%. The next slide provides overview of projected expenditures for fiscal year 25 compared to fiscal year 24. Parks and Recreation is one of the largest departments, account for 28%. The next one is Police, Fire, and Animal Control, accounts for 23%. We also have special revenue funds, which is funded by road use tax. The state of Iowa decides and allocates its two cities based on the official census. The last census was back in 2020. We estimate that road use tax will be $133 per person, and the estimated amount will The next slide provides an overview of budget for special revenue funds. The total budget will be over $4 million, and the total expenses that will account for that fund. Enterprise funds. There is a proposed increase in water rate for both residential and commercial accounts to finance future water systems, improvements, and capacity. This will be, this will be the third of several anticipated increases. For example, residential, the first 200 cubic feet, the rate will go up from $7.85 to $8.29. And for each additional 100 cubic feet, the increase will be from $2.03 to $2.14, and commercial is right below. This is an overview of enterprise funds by fund. Proposed 2025 fiscal year budget includes, this is just the highlight, includes the following items. Community development, iPads to allow rental and building inspectors to document inspections in the field. Engineering, we have a new GIS specialist position. It will be, you know, it will be probably hired in fiscal year 24, but fiscal year 25, it will be, you know, the full year of that position. Fire, we have work on concrete panels at the front of Fire Station 1. Library, we have quite a few things planned for the library, including public laptops replacement, repholstering, some of the bedlam one public furniture, equipment for the new program space in the west wing, and lower-level meeting rooms carpet replacement. Parking, we have replacement of an emergency backup in Vuda for town center ramp. Public transit, replacement of the bus and security camera systems. Sewer, additional full-time operator, solid waste, items impacted by single-stream recycling collection, and replacement of a garbage truck. Streets, streets repairs, patching, and sealing. Telecommunications, we have survey and computer replacement planned, and we have new equipment and upgrades for the water department. And all this information, the budget information can be found at our website for the city of Coralville, at City Hall, and at the Coralville Public Library. What will happen once the budget is adopted, it will be filed with Johnson County auditor by April 30th, and the budget will be effective from July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that overview. Okay. So now, I'll open the public hearing on the budget, and I do believe we have some So now I'll open the public hearing on the budget and I do believe we have someone that would like to speak to us. You know the drill, sir.
My pleasure to be here. I'm Rex Branstad. I live on 2159 Lynn Crest Drive. Of all the things on the budget, the two things that you would get the most calls about would be the street repairs and the garbage truck. So rest of it is very important, but those are the things that would finally make it to the mayor's desk, you know, complaint department. Well, my name is Rex and it is my, my pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about the budget, the proposed budget. Matter of fact, it seems to look normal. You spent a million hours on this thing with department heads and staff on needs and wants and you always have to decide what's a need and what's a want and what do we have to have? And that's an ongoing thing. Nobody really runs for any city council to make sure you can get, be part of the budget planning. That's, but that's, that's part of the job and this looks like a normal budget, but in all honesty, it's not. And I'll tell you why, which we, which we just saw, which was explained. I think this could be one of the most challenging budgets in Corville in a long, long time, a challenging budget. And here's what I, what I think. I draw your attention to the new millage rate as per the Iowa legislature, which is a win for property owners, of which many or maybe all of you are property owners. That's a win on this side of the table. It's going to be a challenge on that side of the table for sure as we, as we go forward. This is just the first year of that. Now, the millage rate was in the mid 30s for years and years and years. It had no place to go. When it would go up, it'd go up like point five or point six. And then oh, about four years ago, it really took off on like a rocket and it's up in the mid 50s now. So it's a, it's a pretty hefty rollback, like I say, which is good for property, property owners and tough for you, for you folks. The projected increase in the water rates is not a win for taxpayers, but it is a win for the future expenses and improvements to our water system and that's a good thing. That's, that's really, that's great. I also, I noticed a narrowing the gap in the transit system income and expenditures. That's wonderful. This is good. A strong transit system is acknowledged in the real estate business to be an attractive, an attraction to homeowners and prospective buyers, thus creating a true market and demand based on a sound transit system. And we are there. We have a very good transit system and it's really becoming, if you couple that up with a, maybe something that you don't really realize what an amenity it is unless you have a really good active trail system, which, which we have. So those two things, a trail system, among other things, a trail system and a transit system are a very, very important part of an attractive, attractive thing for people to buy homes and it helps not only attractiveness, but, but home values and things like that. So we're, we're kind of right there. I note the ongoing shortfall of income versus expenditures at the hotel and convention center. I would say that we must realize as of today in this world, that a new hotel operator is in town and with a new staff and updates, it is no doubt in my opinion that this property will see a nice upswing in business and we will continue to be, it will continue to be a great attraction to the overall vibrancy and the vitality of the IRL, which is, which is the heart nowadays, the heart of businesses in Corville in general. Your, but your budget seems to hold the city line at 14.55 millage level. I did see something on the slide there that's street repair and patching and that's one of the main things that, that I hope you all realized. I, I do plan to come back, my dear Chagrin, but I do plan to come back to tell you about what, what I think is going to be a real tough thing for you in this budget and it's already, it's already paid for. So it's not, I'll be coming, I, I hope to be back next time to tell you about that because I think maybe there's something that, maybe we can get our antenna on it maybe a little bit better. I'm not saying you don't have your antenna up on that thing, but I'm going to come back and tell you about it. So I think the legislative rollback will create a challenge to you and all elected officials in Iowa. The citizens of Corville are used to top-notch services for the regular public daily operations of our police, our fire, parks, recreation, library and transit, refuse and recycling, the streets and more. That's what we homeowners and property owners expect and it's your problem to figure out how to keep the same level of service or more with less money made. The budget's up a little bit, but we're right on schedule. We're, we're right on track. So now you must work to keep our same level of operations with less. That's the challenge. More with less and therein lies our challenge, I tell you about. Now, we've never done the same in Corville. We never have, we never should, we never will. We always have to do better and that's, that's the gauntlet that's down for, for you folks. So we will meet the challenges head on and overcome them and to keep our upward Corville living standards enforced. And I thank each and every one of you for the time and the effort that you put in down here and in our community to keep your, keep your brain cells working on everywhere you go. You know, you, you see things that you'd like to do, like to change, like to work on and you know what you, you know where you're up to is what I'm trying to say. So good, good to report from me and I think we're online and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Do we have any written comments?
No written.
All right. I'll close the public hearing and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving fiscal year 2025 placement measures for depth by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Okay. So before we start our discussion, I just want to note that there are, in addition to the presentation that we just, we just saw, there are many other places you can view the budget. You can view it on the city's website, corleville.org. There was a wonderful overview, a nice breakdown, very similar to what we saw in the presentation in the connection. You can also find copies of the budget at the Corleville Public Library and here at city hall. So there are many opportunities for you to, you know, take a, a close look at, at the budget. So with that, I would just open it up. Do we have any other questions or discussion? I know this has been, you know, we've been working on this for several months. I really appreciate all of the effort of city staff. It has been challenging, given a lot of the changes that we've seen, but I'm really proud of the way we, we come together and collaborate and, and, you know, put together a budget that is going to provide wonderful service to our constituents. So any other comments or questions?
I just want to extend my thanks and gratitude to all the city staff that's probably put in a little bit of overtime the last few months, but I appreciate all your work you've done. So it's a good, big challenge. Thank you.
Certainly agree with that. What was kind of skipped over there, I think, was what Rex was alluding to, which is that limits on the growth that came through. So I don't know if somebody or if you can quantify that for us, which is what made this a lot more difficult. So we were just over 3% growth and we had to roll that back by 2% so we can only grow by one. What did that come out to in terms of total dollars? I don't know if anybody has that on their fingertips.
And one thing I would note, great question and really important, thank you for mentioning that, but there has been an update to that. So new legislation that is correcting some of it. Kelly, can you provide an overview?
Yeah. First to your question, the number is about half a million dollars is what the 2% rollback would have was. And so, you know, if it wasn't for that limitation, we would have probably been able to keep our levy rate the same because some of those other dollars could have been covered by that additional half a million dollars.
So the levy rate just, it went up, but it got up more because of the rollback. So on balance, it went down.
Right. Yeah. And the general fund levy actually went down, that portion of it. It went up because of the two insurances, but you would have had more dollars to pay for those insurances within the existing levy if it wouldn't, it wouldn't have paid. So my guess, and it's purely a guess, is that we could have stayed at the same levy rate and not have gone up if it wouldn't have been for that legislative change. Because you would have had, you'd have had a half a million dollars more under the existing levy rate and.
I guess I don't understand that. If the levy rate.
If the levy rate would have stayed the same as it was before, we wouldn't have had, because we would have had additional dollars. We had to actually lower the general fund levy because of the 2% deduction. So.
Okay.
Back to the mayor's.
But our levy went up, but not the general fund levy. She didn't break that down for her.
Yeah, she did have it on there. It was the seven point, I think it was, it went from eight, 10 to 7.9. I can't remember what the last digit is, but so, yeah, that's where it went down, that 20 cents. And to answer the mayor's question, it's, it's really unusual what they did and Representative Jacoby and I had a discussion about it again yesterday. He's now home. I said back with the same people, but the, so they lowered the percentage of where you get penalized. So they lowered it from, it was 3%, now it's down to 2.75%. So that was a negative. The positive was they changed it from 2.75 to 4%. If you grow, you only get a 1% penalty instead of a 2% penalty. So it's still back, you know, as, as Representative Jacoby and I talked about yesterday, it's still like you're at a gambling table and rolling, rolling craps, right? Cause it, you have no real control of, is it 2.76 or is it, you know?
2.74.
Yeah. So.
We want it to be 2.74.
Yeah. So that's, that's the problem, but they did make a little bit of positive.
Did that pass then?
It did pass. The question was why they went.
But not for this year.
That's for next year.
Yeah, it's too late to do it.
Yeah. So the question is, you know, which wasn't really answered is why did it go down from 3% to 2.75? But so I guess it just depends on where you end up next year, whether it's a positive or a negative.
Well, and the challenge, you know, it's hard when growth is penalized. It's hard when growth is penalized because when you have that growth, you obviously need more services to keep the community running. So it is, it is very challenging to kind of navigate all of that. You know, we want to see our communities grow. That is a good thing, but it, this is very difficult.
Yeah, I think the other thing that Rex commented on, this is the first year. So it's going to get more difficult as the years go by because it'll compound upon itself. And so that's where I think the challenges are going to be. And I think he was right, it is going to get more difficult each year as you go move
Any other comments? Questions? Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Volga Zhang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with win absent. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Next item, we have the consolidated transit funding application. And I would just note that the public hearing for this item will be on June 11th, 2024. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the city of Corville fiscal year 2025 Iowa Department of Transportation Consolidated Transit Funding Application, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Volga Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. I would just start out, I just have a couple of questions about, about the application. So one of the first questions I have is that I noticed that there were some electric buses included in this. This is our parking and transit director, Vicki Robrock, by the way.
Yes, we've continued to include light duty electric buses. We're still in the same situation with the heavy duties that they can't clear the Iowa Avenue Railroad overpass. So it doesn't sound like there's any progress really in the height of those currently, but I hope that as technology evolves that that may as well.
Yeah. And so these would just be smaller than the larger one?
Yes, they'd actually be used in paratransit service.
Okay. That's what I wondered, if it was going to be a paratransit vehicle. And then I noticed too, that there were some requests for bus shelters replacing and maybe adding. And I know that we had included shelters in some of our other requests. Are these new ones or are these the same ones?
These, these are the same. We've had them in for several years. If we don't have them in and funding becomes available, we aren't eligible for them. So anything we include that we may want to, if funding becomes available.
Yeah. I know, like I, I noticed that I, I get a lot of community members asking about bus shelters and, and things like that. And that's some feedback I've gotten and so I'm always happy to see them included. Hopefully we will get some of that funding very soon. We have any other questions?
I'm interested to know if, if there's been any request through the IRA for like possible solar panels to feed these electric buses at our facility or?
So right now we've been funded for two light duty. When we'll receive them is a little bit up in the air. The Iowa DOT is the one that's doing the grant, so we're kind of at their mercy. Right now they, I don't know that we're advanced enough to go solar panel yet. I know from some of the other transit agencies, they've had some issues with charging, the length of the charges and such. So even getting the, the final permanent chargers they're supposed to have. So I, I don't know that we're in a situation yet where we would be able to charge with solar.
All right. Any other questions for Vicki or any other comments? All right. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Volga Zhang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with win absent. Next item, we have the intermodal facility relighting project. And this project will replace several lighting fixtures in the intermodal facility. And we will start this with a quotation report from Vicki Robrock.
Yeah, actually this would be to replace all of the fixtures in the intermodal. We're having a significant amount that are starting to fail and so we wanted to obviously upgrade. We basically received four quotes from 24,232 to 35,000, I'm sorry, $38,683.75. Our recommendation is that we go with the quote, the second lowest quote, which is $35,885. It has, the low bid has a five-year warranty. The second low bid has a 10-year warranty. These are also the fixtures that we have in our other parking facilities and we have had very good luck with them. They've provided very good lighting. We even tested the low bid fixture and found that it didn't have as consistent lighting and uplighting as the current that we had. So we would recommend going with van meter for $35,885 and the $9,000 install fee by Advance Electric.
All right. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Okay. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution accepting quotations and approving contracts for the intermodal relighting project introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments?
Vicki, do you want to just comment on the Mid-American rebates? Cause they've been working on, with us on a lot of these different programs, which is extremely helpful.
Yes. So Scott Coberly, our maintenance supervisor in parking, worked with Mid-American and you have to submit what your, your anticipated plan and project is and then they estimate what your incentive credit will be. And in this situation, they estimate that it will be $15,387. So it is a significant savings to the city.
Great.
How unusual is it to have to replace lights in a parking facility in less than 10 years?
So a lot of the ones that we've replaced were kind of, they were the newest versions of the LED, I guess you'd say. And so like anything, it improves over time and we've just. just found, I mean, it's hard to believe, but the intermodal is already nine, is it nine years old? Yeah. So we're at that 10-year kind of warranty peak for the ones that we're replacing it with.
Awesome. Any other questions? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with win absent. Next item, utility resilience brick subaward agreement. And this agreement is for phase one of our utility resilience project. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute and sign that certain Iowa Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Subaward Agreement for FEMA's Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. I was wondering if we could just get a little overview of where we're at with this. This is a really fantastic project, and our deputy city administrator, Ellen Hubble, can tell us a little bit more about this?
Yes, good evening. This is an exciting project, and we've been working on it for a little while. This is the project that we're working with FEMA and Iowa Homeland Security to relocate power lines from backyards and overhead to front yards and underground to make our power system more resilient in, when we have windstorms or ice storms and that type of thing. And so this is a great next step. This is our award from Iowa Homeland Security. This will get us to 60% design of the project. This is for the Mid-American service area, so roughly south of Interstate 80 in Corleville, and it will cover the costs when we get to the next phase of approval of construction. It will cover the costs for installation for homeowners. And, and we've been working closely with Mid-American, and Kevin Olson, our city attorney, has drafted an agreement that, where they will be covering the local share. So we're very excited and appreciate their partnership.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all of your work on this as well. I know this, this has been, you know, we've been working on this for several months, and I, you know, you've done a fantastic job. We appreciate it. Any other questions or comments on this?
I just wanted to clarify, will there be a fee for the homeowners to connect to the grant?
The homeowner connection fee will be covered by the grant. It will, so the service line that goes from, from the right of way to the home will be paid for with the grant.
That's wonderful.
That's great.
And we will be having more community meetings. We had one, I think it was last January, and we'll be having one again when we have more information. We are just waiting to get a little farther down the road. This current agreement gets us to 60% design of the project.
Excellent. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Great.
Okay. Awesome. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich. Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with win absent. Next item, tobacco violations. These violations are for selling tobacco products to a minor. And we have a few of these that we need to address. Could I start with the first resolution, please?
Resolution accepting payment of $300 penalty for Almost Paradise Vapor and Tobacco at 2301 Second Street, number five, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. Questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Vogelzang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with win absent. Could I have the next resolution, please?
Resolution accepting payment of $300 penalty for Casey's, number 2779 at 1987 Second Street, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. Questions or discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with win absent. And the last one, please.
Resolution accepting payment of $300 penalty from Walgreens, number 10985 at 2751 Hartland Drive, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with win absent. And our last item, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vogelzang, seconded by Peterson. Could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes with win absent. All right, city administrators' report.
Yes, Mayor. First, I would just like to note the passing this weekend of our former mayor, Mike Ketchy. Mike had a long, long history with the city of Corleville, and he served in several different boards and commissions, planning and zoning, was one of his favorites, along with, he was involved in the Parks area. But then he was on council from 1966 to 1978. There was a couple terms in there that he wasn't a council member, but started in 1966. Then he was mayor from 1978 to 1993. And I think the most significant things about those time periods is that's when Corleville had a significant, significant amount of growth over that time period, when he was both on the city council and mayor. And Mike had a very interesting personal history. Mike was born in Lithuania. His family then moved to Germany, and then he moved to, his family moved to the United States. And all in, during that time period when there was obviously lots of conflicts in, during World War II. So just note his passing and all of the good things that he did for our community, and his wife Dolores still lives here in Corleville, along with one of his daughters, and just remember his family at this time. Lot of things coming up with cleaning up around your yard or your house. May 4th is citywide garage sale. May 11th is the recycle swap and community shred here at City Hall. And then Mayor's Cleanup Week is May 13th through the 17th. So there's lots of opportunities for you to either get new things or get rid of things in your home. So just encourage people to take advantage of those opportunities. I'm going to be gone for a couple days for training, and so I'm going to miss the opportunity to go to the Corleville Library tomorrow because Allison is hosting us at the library for the management team meeting. But, so I went over today because they have a new discovery center, and I went over to see it, and it's now completed, and it's just a wonderful new facility. So I went to visit that, and when, while I was there, they also have a new mobile kitchen that they had gotten today, and they got a grant for that, and it's fascinating opportunity to do all kinds of different education and fun activities with that as well. So just thank the library for their continued efforts of being on the cutting edge of new programs for Corleville.
All right. Thank you so much. Mayor's report, I have a few things. Obviously, want to start out by sharing my condolences to the Ketchy family. You know, I met Mayor Ketchy a few different times. I'll never forget the first time I ran for the city council back in 2017. I knocked on his door, and it was so wonderful to get that chance to meet him and to chat with him. And, and I've had other opportunities to, to visit with him and his family over the years, and really appreciate his service to the, the city of Corleville, and, and he will definitely be missed. Also, just wanted to say thank you to the folks who organized this weekend's basket auction. It was another wonderful event. And just really appreciate the efforts of the volunteers that helped get that event off the ground, and of course, appreciate all of the sponsors that donate goods for the auction and help us fund our beloved Fourth of July tradition in the city of Corleville. So thank you to all of those folks. And then finally, I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge the proclamation that I did earlier this evening for NAMI, and May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. And I always like to, you know, talk a little bit about my own struggles with mental health, during Mental Health Awareness Month, because I think it's something that is highly stigmatized. And I think the only way we can break that stigma is if we are sharing our own stories. So I have been diagnosed with anxiety and depression. I had received treatment for those conditions. And I just really think it's important that, you know, folks know that there are people throughout the community every day that you encounter. You don't know it, but that are struggling with, with a variety of mental health issues. So I'm glad that we have the opportunity to, to highlight that and to bring some attention to that with the proclamation. I also just wanted to note, you know, for anybody that might be struggling with a mental health situation, the 988 line is available for you. That is a crisis line, similar to 911, but it is specific to mental health conditions. So if you are in crisis, do call that number, 988, and they will, the folks on that line can get you connected to some treatment and some help options if, if that is something you need. And that is all I have. City attorneys' report?
I would like to say I was very pleased with the proclamation for Older Americans Month. That's all I have.
Awesome. Okay, thanks so much. All right. Committee and council members' report. We'll start down at this end with Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple things. First, I unfortunately had a conflict, so couldn't make the opening of the Watermill Restaurant at the Hyatt, but did get a chance to go there a few days later and had a fantastic meal, and, and really appreciated the upgrades there. Encourage everybody to give it a try if they haven't already. And then, just wanted to state that Houses into Homes is having a fundraiser on Sunday out at Pinseekers. You need a foursome. My wife and I are willing to support a foursome if anybody wants to golf. If you haven't, if you haven't played that, it's, it's an interesting experience, kind of like Topgolf, if you, if you've ever done that. But encourage you to support that organization, and that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Vogelzang.
I'd like to echo Don's comment. I appreciate the proclamation of us old people. Thank you. Just a couple comments. Also, the, my hat's off to the Hyatt Regency. It was a phenomenal facility we have, and it's really going to be, it's a great anchor in IRL, and it's a great, great facility. The Corleville Fire Department Pancake Breakfast was, was another success. That was great. Probably had too many pancakes, but they really were good. Looking forward to the recycled totes. That'll be a good thing. I got to reorganize my garage a little bit, though, but it'll be worth it. Looking forward to seeing the Herkies hitting the streets, what, next week? May 1st, right? It'll be fun, be fun to do. And also, the, the basket auction was, was a lot of fun. My wife, Anita, is in charge of the United Ways Power of the Purse event, and she was on the hunt for the purses. And guess what we came home with? So, no, it was a great, great event. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Well, first, I'd like to say, unfortunately, we had a case of the flu, not myself, but my wife was sick this weekend, so I wasn't able to attend some of these events because I didn't want to get anybody sick. I didn't come down with it, luckily. But I would like to also echo on the mental, mental awareness things. You know, that is very important. We see it a lot in our trade and construction, a lot of mental awareness, and especially, you know, during the winter months, we see a lot of issues when people get laid off from work and stuff. So, but one of the things that Iowa City Federation of Labor will be doing is on Monday, April 29th, at the Iowa Public Library, starting at noon, there will be a Workers Memorial Day observation, where we will be observing everybody that has died on the job in the state of Iowa in the past year. So if you've never been to that, I would highly recommend going to it. I haven't missed one in probably over 16 years. It's something that's very dear to us. Luckily, the numbers are a little down, so that's, that's good. So that means our safety programs are working. But, and yeah, I was very disappointed. I was looking forward to gorging myself in pancakes Saturday, but unfortunately wasn't able to, to make it there. But that's all I have tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Goodrich.
Thanks. I'm in agreement with everything that's been said, and my sympathies to the Ketchy family. The Friends of the Library book sale is this Friday and Saturday, April 26th and 27th. And there was one other thing. There's a church in town, and I can't remember the name of it, that's celebrating their 40th anniversary.
Tabernacle Baptist.
Tabernacle Baptist. Congratulations to Tabernacle Baptist. They've been in Corleville for 40 years.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Vogelzang, seconded by Knutson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.